All this meeting back to order, can we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move right into our presentations for the evening. We have our first presentation is from SimCOG. If you are here, come on up to the lectern and ask that you give your name and address for the record if you will.
Grant Brooks, 1311 Columbia River Township. Thank you for having us this evening. Again, my name is Grant Brooks. I'm a membership specialist and I'm going to be presenting along with Kevin Johnson. He's a planner at SimCOG. We always enjoy an opportunity to visit and present for our members. We'll be providing an overview of our organization, our recent planning activities in areas of transportation, environment, community economic development, and our efforts to implement our plans in Southfield. As you may know, we serve seven counties. Current SimCOG members are shaded in this map here as you see. All seven counties are members, as are many intermediate school districts and community colleges. Our funding is provided by member dues, which we use to match federal funds and state grants and pay for data acquisition and analysis, planning and technical assistance to improve our reason and support implementation of local plans. Each member community votes to join, pays membership dues, appoints delegates, and an alternate to SimCOG's General Assembly, our full membership committee. So your delegate is Don Ferrcassi and his alternate is Martin Fraser. These are the people who vote on behalf of the city and our key contact people. Membership at SimCOG is organizational, so all of you are welcome to attend and participate in our meetings, attend workshops, and contact our staff for any data and information you may need. You are receiver of bi-weekly, weekly digital newsletters called Regional Update. This newsletter will be the quickest way to stay informed about SimCOG's activities, upcoming trainings, grant deadlines, and legislative news. You might also consider getting more involved by requesting an appointment to a task force seeking an election to serve on the committee. These groups are where much of SimCOG's work is done. Committee elections take place at the block caucus meetings every June. Treasurer Herb Lornberg is currently serving as our financial and budget committee. Our guiding vision at SimCOG is that all people of southeast Michigan benefit from a connected, thriving region of small towns, dynamic urban centers, active waterfronts, and diverse neighborhoods, premier educational institutions, and abundant agricultural, recreational, and natural areas. High-quality data is the foundation of the work we do to accomplish this vision. SimCOG collects and analyzes data on people, the economy, jobs, housing, and transportation, the environment, and land use. Our newest mapping tool you see here allows you to view various community data at the same time. This map shows total population in Southfield, while the chart on the lower left shows population density. Okay, here. We also have forecast data which projects the region's future economic and demographic outlook. This is all available on SimCOG's website, by the way. At the same time, we will have fewer prime working age people than available jobs because this will impact our economic growth. Our new regional economic development strategy will address this issue. Sorry, I went out of slide. Another way we ensure data is useful at the local level is with our interactive mapping tool. This allows members and the public to zoom into specific locations in the region and receive customized data on our wide range of tools, including employment density, traffic volumes, community patterns, and pavement conditions, which provides the latest available rating, good, fair, poor, for roadways across the region. We have shared this pavement information with legislators and the governor's office as they discuss road funding proposals. All of this information can be found on our website. In addition, I encourage you to reach out to Stephanie Taylor, she has a big smiley face there, our information center. There's always SimCOG staff person available to help you base your specific needs. SimCOG also has several regional plans that cover a range of topics such as traffic safety, bicycling, pedestrian travel, green infrastructure, economic development, water resources, parks and recreation, and transportation. The transportation plan charts the course for maintaining and improving our transportation system into the future and is what makes the region eligible for $1 billion in transportation funding annually. The plan explains SimCOG's role in the transportation planning, connection to other regional plans, their impact on the economy and the environment, and includes projects, policies, and actions to implement the plan. The regional transportation plan is implemented through Transportation Improvement Program, or TIP. The TIP is the collection of projects that are to be implemented over the next four years. The TIP follows, the TIP follows the priorities of the 2045 RTP with an emphasis on preserving roads and bridges and balancing investments in safety operations, capacity, pedestrian bike facilities, and the environment. This chart shows the value of transportation projects invested in Southfield over the last four years by primary type of project, over $140 million 2020-23 TIP for Southfield. This kind of shows my project year in this map here. Ensuring our roadways are safe is the goal of the Region Transportation Traffic Safety Plan, which identifies safety needs and guides investment decisions to reduce fatalities and injuries on our roadways. It benchmarks traffic crashes and identifies problem areas. Most importantly, it also includes specific strategies to address these challenges. To assist local efforts, SimCOG analyzes and shares crash data in a usable and easy-to-understand format with communities. For example, our crash location map includes all crashes in the region over the last five years by crash severity, as well as key factors, including alcohol, young driver, pedestrian, and bicycle. This information is available at the community, individual community level. Shown here are the crashes in Southfield over the last five years, zoomed in as 11-mile near Evergreen. Information on crash, each crash is available by clicking on individual points. Speaking of walking and biking, SimCOG assists communities in planning and implementing bicycle pedestrian projects. In the region, we have over 3,000 miles of bikeways and pathways. A great example of implemented projects that we help connect communities through walking and biking is the Evergreen Road Pedestrian Enhancement here in Southfield, which SimCOG funded through the Transportation Alternatives Program, often known as TAP. Earlier this year, we launched a bicycle pedestrian task force, which is currently working to develop a plan to ensure walking and biking connections across the region. One of the main safety concerns is increasing, increasing crashes involving pedestrians and bicyclists. While these crashes are less than 2% of all traffic crashes, they account for 28% of traffic-related fatalities. Our safety education campaign called Walk Bike Drive Safe reflects the fact that everyone has a role to play in pedestrian and bicycle safety. Now, we've also developed an interactive bicycle network map that provides communities with a one-stop shop of all known biking facilities in the region. Transiting to environment, SimCOG's environment efforts focus on policies and strategies affecting the quality of southeast Michigan's water, air, and land. Southeast Michigan, lakes, rivers, and wetlands define the region's geography and are essential to the economic health, attracting visitors, and enhancing quality of life for residents. SimCOG's Water Resources Plan focuses on the blue economy, focusing on the economic impact water has on the region, natural resources, which includes issues related to protecting our rivers, streams, wetlands, and woodlands, and infrastructure, focusing on the quality and management of drinking water, wastewater, and stormwater systems. The water plan promotes an integrated water resources management approach needed in successfully implementing each of these. An important part of implementing this plan is mapping and collecting data of our region's underground infrastructure, including our drinking water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer networks that are buried underneath major roadways. We appreciate Southfield's providing data in the pilot project we conducted. The program is now in full swing. As you know, infrastructure systems are essential to economic prosperity and quality of life. Understanding the condition and needs of these systems allow local governments to make informed decisions before investing in costly improvements. Knowing the condition of assets and strengthening coordination on projects will save money, minimize inconvenience of the public, and give us a strong voice in communicating the need for investment in roads and underground infrastructure. I encourage you to continue involvement in this program, which will allow local governments to reimburse for providing asset data for drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and infrastructure systems. Lastly, on our environment piece, another part of implementing the Water Resources Plan is through educating the public. SimCOG created one water campaign in a partnership with Great Lakes Water Authority and Freshwater Forum at the Cranbrook Institute of Science. The concept, which is illustrated in the logo, is quite simple. To make the brightest possible future, it's essential that we recognize the importance and interconnectedness of our water systems. Our slogan is "Keep it fresh, keep it flowing." The campaign focuses on three key areas: stormwater, wastewater, and drinking water. We also are working on implementing our green infrastructure business for southeast Michigan. Green infrastructure includes parks, lakes, wetlands, and trees, as well as constructed green wells, bio swells, and rain gardens. Here's our green infrastructure map. Oh, Oakland County. I think I just, right here. Now, we'll transition to Kevin Hill's presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The region's economic development strategy provides a framework for public and private entities to work together to increase our region's prosperity. We're in the early stages of updating the strategy. The strategy will focus on three areas: place, business, and talent. Over the summer, we hosted forums on these topics. Rochelle Freeman attended all three of these to provide perspective from the city of Southfield. We'll be launching a task force to guide the next strategy early next year. We had illuminating conversations at the forums, and several takeaways will help guide our regional strategy. To ensure that our region is attractive to business, participants highlighted the need to have the right infrastructure in place, ample talent, and state and local government working together. Likewise, attracting and retaining talent requires educational and training opportunities, affordable housing, and quality of life amenities. An important component of both economic development and environmental priorities is our parks and recreational resources. And as such, earlier this year, we adopted a Parks and Recreation Plan with the goal of ensuring that our parks and trails meet the quality of life, health, and accessibility needs of both residents and visitors. Red Poll Park adorns the front cover of the plan, and the other photo on the slide is of the Evergreen Road pedestrian enhancements which Grant discussed earlier. As part of developing the plan, we collected parks data and created a mobile app. It has information on recreational opportunities for over 2,600 parks in the region. And for any park, a list of amenities and information like the size and ownership is provided as displayed on the screen for Horse Tail Woods Park. And Red Poll Park, which I mentioned a moment ago, will be among the newest entities for this app. SimCOG is actively engaged in legislative issues, important to local governments in southeast Michigan. We adopted a legislative policy platform last December, and the platform focuses on the need for investment in the region's infrastructure, workforce, communities, and natural assets. Our advocacy activities include working with Representative Joe Tate, whose district includes part of Detroit and Rose Point, to facilitate a regional legislators' economic development session, which brought together Metro Detroit legislators for a discussion of demographic trends and policies that can help bolster the region's economy. We also work with congressional offices. Just last week, SimCOG hosted a briefing, which was attended by staff from 10 offices where we provided an overview of SimCOG's work and shared our priorities on federal transportation reauthorization, which expires this time next year. Our main focus right now is on a variety of issues related to the infrastructure. As you know, road funding is a priority for Governor Whitmer, and throughout the discussions inland, SimCOG has shared our data and information with legislators to impact the debate. We recently completed a study of more than 150 city, village, and township budgets in the region that indicates local governments are significantly supplementing state road funding. The study shows local governments contribute $120 million per year to road maintenance and construction, and these funds are generated from dedicated property taxes or appropriations from their own operating budgets. We are using the study to more effectively communicate to state officials, emphasizing that locals are ponying up the cash for roads, and now it's time for the state to do the same. We are also supporting bills introduced in the State House of Representatives that would improve our ability to manage stormwater. House Bill 4691 would allow for the establishment of stormwater utilities, and House Bill 4692 would limit local government liability for damage caused by large-scale rain events. We're asking our members to help with passage of these bills. Please watch for our bi-weekly newsletter, Regional Update, in early October for a sample letter of support that you can use as a basis for corresponding with your legislators. And if you decide to send a letter, please send a copy to SimCOG. We would appreciate that. Other issues, other issues in the platform include maintaining CWBG funding, support for the census, supporting programs that address education and training, and local government finance. Please watch Regional Update for information on all of this legislation that SimCOG is monitoring and for ways to engage with your legislature. And as we wrap things up this evening, I want to invite all of you to attend the next General Assembly meeting. We will be hosting a variety of workshops, including one on economic development, which will address our region's low labor participation rate. The plenary session will feature Rochester Hills Mayor Brian Barnett, who is currently serving as the president of the U.S. Conference of Mayors. And please go to simcog.org for more information. Finally, please connect with us by following us on any number of the listed social media outlets. We also have additional SimCOG-produced videos and podcasts that you can check out by going to our website, and a SimCOG app that provides easy access to our meeting information and directions to our office downtown. So thank you very much for having us tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation. I know you've been, you guys have been, we've been trying to work out our calendars for a little while, so we definitely appreciate the presentation. Council, do you have any questions, Mr. Fraser?
Yes, I do. I have a couple or three questions. One is, one of the reports is that you, you track automobile bicycle accidents, and I think the data said it was about 2% of, of the accidents are bicycle automobile, but 20% of the fatalities. Are you doing anything, or do you have any data on lighting bicycles? Because I see bicycles at night, kids riding bicycles with no lights, no reflectors. And it may be helpful to all the communities around to at least get the word out that that is a safety feature to have lights and reflectors on bicycles.
Right. So the Walk Bike Drive campaign, we actually have some freebies we're going to be giving out. We did one round of it already, so all of our members in the SimCOG region who requested materials such as bike reflectors, iron bands, reflectors, they're free. So we're going to do a second round, starting in, don't get me to start to state the exact date, but it's in October, we're going to be giving out those items for free for those who request it. That is a big issue.
Okay. And as long as we're talking about collisions, do you do, have you got any data on automobile and deer collisions?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, we, every year, we usually have a map that we come up indicating all the locations for, for where those deer auto or vehicle collisions do occur, and we could provide you with that data set if you'd like to have that.
Okay, that would be helpful to see what's going on in the other part of the county, because I know we have our headaches here in Southfield. And the last question I have is, do you know if, because you talked about the purity of the water, are septic systems going up or down in the county?
I don't know the answer to that question. You know, septic tends to be more of an issue for our rural communities. We get that question quite a bit in particular counties. We may have information on that. If we do, I would definitely get that to you. Let me go back and research that.
Okay, because every time they go out to a green field and start building houses, you know, a contractor builds a new neighborhood or something, and there are, there's no water or sewer out there, they have to have septic systems. So while we're trying to battle to get rid of septic systems here in, in the city of Southfield, to keep the water clean, you know, the contractors seem to be keeping ahead of us by going out and buying a farm and then building a bunch of houses, so.
Yeah, I'll be trying to get that message to you. No problem.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Brightwell?
Yeah, that was a very good presentation, a lot of information, a lot of data. I know you indicated that we could probably go to certain sites to get, because the, is there, could you provide us with where we could go and, or will you provide us with copies? Was it too many pages to provide each of them with copies? Or just some kind of way, let us know where to go on your site to find everything that was basically presented to us.
Well, for the economic development strategy, for example, we do have a separate page for economic development, right in the upper left corner, that you can identify which plan that you want to take a closer look at, our transportation plan, economic development, water, and that will, that will take you to that portion of the website.
So we can drill down?
Yeah, you can drill down from there, yes. There's also a search box up in the upper right corner, where if there's a particular search term that you'd like to search on, you have that ability as well.
No. SimCOG.org is where you start at. From there, all our information's on that page there. So simcog.org.
Okay. Yes. Mr. Ferrcassi?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank these young men for being here. Southfield was one of the cities that brought SimCOG alive, so to speak. We brought in Oakland County, especially South Oakland, and the resources that you provided are just unbelievable. People want to take advantage of it. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from Council? All right, again, thank you all for coming this evening. We appreciate your time. All right. Our next presentation is a overview of the Southfield Corbett Community Cup Challenge and the presentation of the cup. So we'll see who won this year. All right, Ms. Freeman.
We do have, this is our third annual Southfield Community Cup, and this year was a phenomenal event. Everyone had a great time. And before we get started with our short presentation, I definitely want to thank Chris and Chris and Terry Fields, of course, from Parks and Recreation, and the Parks and Recreation Board. And I know Rosemary Allen is here, and we completely appreciate everything, all the support that we got from Parks and Recreation. It would not have been possible to pull this event together. A few years ago, we had a meeting at the library where several large companies came together and shared ideas, and the Community Cup was born out of that idea, and was able to create a network and build team spirit while supporting worthwhile efforts in the community. And this year, we had, we did a few modifications. We're trying to tweak it every year, but this year, we thought we would extend it over a six-week timeframe, and we had six different events, 21 companies, and over 500 participants and volunteers. And we decided to work with Parks and Recreation and Bedford Park to create a mural. And I definitely want to thank our creative team. We had four companies come together with representatives from the Mars Agency, KMAO, Moncor, and IHS Market. They helped us create the mural and really implement the entire project. I definitely want to thank people from Parks and Recreation, as well as our code enforcement department. They were amazing. They helped us all along the way with, with everything. And then we had some outstanding volunteers from KMAO that came out, and a few people from Denso and the code enforcement to prep the wall. So it was really a phenomenal event, so it was a major team effort. Like I mentioned, we had over 20, we had 21 companies participate, some smaller companies and large companies throughout the community, and it was great to see everyone working together. The first event was a bowling event. This was new for us, and I'm not the best bowler, so we thought we had a good team, but I don't know, our team didn't really. Denso did a great job, and we played at Plum Howell Lanes, and they appreciated us being there. It was a lot of fun. The next event was a trivia event, which is always a favorite with our companies. Everyone enjoyed that. And then we had an amazing race around Southfield, which was really incredible. It took all of our businesses throughout the entire community. They got to interact with our police and fire, see all the different sites in the community, our parks, and visit a lot of our different buildings. Everyone really enjoyed that, and I think that's what IHS mentioned. That's one of the reasons why they pushed forward to become the eventual winners of this competition. We had a goofy golf event, which was hilarious, and all the teams had to do different fun activities at the golf course, include, including dressing up like the people from Caddyshack, so that was really cute. Here's the mural. If you haven't seen the mural, it's at Bedford Park. I invite everyone to go over and look at it. It's, it looks really beautiful, and I know Parks and Rec has had a lot of positive comments about it. We did use some of the funds from our budget to pay for some of the paint, but everything else was done with donations. And then the kickball tournament was the final event. And then the kickball tournament was the final event, and again, you know, IHS was pretty much dominant the entire time, making all the other companies really upset, but they didn't win the kickball tournament, did they? No. Anyway, it was a lot of fun, and it was at Inglewood. You can see they came out ahead. Our city didn't do that great, our staff, but next year, we will rally back and try and do some, do a little bit better. We, we did do a, a survey with all the companies, and 61 gave us a 10 of a 10, or nine out of 10 for overall experience, and an additional 39% gave us a seven or eight out of 10. So we had very strong participation and enjoyment in this event. The kickball and the amazing race were two of the two favorite events. And again, we did some modifications. We know a lot of the companies have people that travel, and it's hard to get people together, so we're evolving that. They enjoyed the different activities that we selected. Some people would like to see the volleyball and softball back, and again, I think everyone just had a great time just being with all their coworkers. And we made a big effort to try and mix the companies together so people could have a chance to get to know other people from other businesses, and that turned out really great as well. Again, we're looking forward to 2020, and we, you know, the surveys show that they would like to do some work back with the Southfield Public Schools, which we, we really enjoyed last year, so we'll try and integrate that back in, and it was a phenomenal event. And so, Chris, you have the trophy here? And Caitlin, and Grace, and Chris? Come on up. Mr. Mayor, would you like to? As I mentioned, IHS Market, they were the dominant winners here.
Well, thank you. My name is Caitlin Abel. I'm so excited to be accepting this. On behalf of IHS Market, I have my coworker.
Hi, I'm Grace Cameron.
Yeah, and this is, personally, this was both of our first years doing it, and my first year cheering on the tournament for IHS Market, and I think it was a great way to bring our coworkers and meet other people from companies and just the community events and volunteering. That was awesome, to see everybody get involved. So we're really excited, and we couldn't have done it without the dedication and hard work from all of our team members on every single team throughout trivia, the amazing race, we both participated in that, which was awesome, kickball and everything. So, thank you. We're so excited to be bringing this back to our company.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Could you tell us what your company does and where you're located?
Yeah, so IHS Market, we are a data company. We both work on the automotive team. I work on the Ford account, and then Grace works-
Yep, I'm on the GM account team.
Yeah, so we sell like different registration data, but we have everything from chemical, energy, maritime, a lot of different parts to our organization, and then we're right off of Evergreen in Southfield.
Very good.
Yeah, right across the street.
Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Shelley, you know, I know you kicked me off your golf team last year. If you really wanted to win that bowling thing, I was your guy. You missed out.
Back on both of the teams, so.
All right, thank you all very much. Have a good evening. All right, council, we got two sets of minutes to approve.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes of September 9, 2019, and regular meeting minutes of September 16, 2019.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes for September 9th and the regular meeting minutes of September 16. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting's passed. Moving on to the consent agenda, Mr. Mandelbaum has asked if we take item H out for, right now, for further discussion, but I will entertain a motion to approve the other items right now.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move, I'd like to move the approval of consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, K, L.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we, that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, I, J, K, and L. Are there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? All right, those items passed. So, Mr. Mandelbaum, extension on the audit service contract.
Yes, thank you. My question, or really my, my comment slash feeling is, we've used Plant Moran to do our audits since 2006. I feel that, you know, we continually extend the contract. I feel that we should really go out, see what other companies could be out there. I think that we keep talking about transparency and accountability. I think that after 13 years of having the same company audit us, I think it may be a good idea to see what else is out there, to see who else could potentially audit us. I know that we do have a good working relationship with them, and they are not fearful to call out issues that they find, but I still think that it would be prudent of us to go back out to look for another company. That's all.
Anyone else wanna comment on this item?
Mr. Chair, with respect to our audit company, they're a marriage to having someone that is familiar with your operation, and someone that you can readily pick up the phone and converse with them about issues. And it's not unusual for corporations to have the same CPA accounting firm for 20 years plus, by having to come out of two large corporations that they had the same auditing firm for 20 years plus. So I, but I, I do recognize the, the fact that we wanna stay current with respect to perhaps pricing in our, but we do feel as though having a relationship, and we have unique items here within the city of Southfield that are looked at annually, and by looking at those particular items, Plant Moran has been a very good partner with, with the city, and they understand the limitations of the city, and they, they have literally worked with us while keeping us, let's say, legal. We, we have not screwed anything relative to, to, to the fidelity of, of what, what is given to the public, and also to our regulators, and also to our investors. So I don't have a problem with perhaps, perhaps looking at the pricing or, or just getting someone else's opinion, but I do, I do feel that from a finance standpoint, that, that we have, if we have a good relationship with a very reputable, honest company, and I can pick up the phone and call a partner. I'm sure Mrs. Zorn, our financial director, can readily pick up the phone and get immediate response from a partner on our particular county. That says a lot. But I'm not adverse to, to listening to someone else, but I would be adverse to changing our, our relationship with an established accounting firm.
Any other comments? And I think your point is well taken, Mr. Mandelbaum. We've talked about this, about various contracts that, you know, over time, that we've worked with people, and maybe it's not a bad idea to at least look and hear from other folks, as Mr. Brightwell was saying, and you as well. So I think at this point, we're, this is not the time to switch gears right now, my personal opinion, but nonetheless. Does anybody else have any other comments?
Mr. President, if I could just remind council, the fees are the same as they have been since 19, since 2016. There's no in, increase. They are an integral part of our team. We work with them throughout the year in, in different areas, and I also understand Mr. Man, Councilman Mandelbaum's point, is from time to time, we should, we should go shopping. But, you know, this, a question of time and resources, that when we do shop, it's a very costly process for the city as well. You know, as I sit in various conference, conferences, from Michigan Municipal League to the, the Government Finance Association, they are, are one of the premier entities, and we're fortunate to have them based here in Southfield and be part of our team. So, and again, that we've been able to keep these fees flat for three years is a statement, too.
And this is a one-year contract, correct? Two?
Two years.
Two years.
Two years.
Any other comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I move that we approve the extension of the audit service contract as presented in the consent agenda.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the extension of the audit service contract. Any, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The extension is approved. We'll move now to the public hearings. Ms. Freeman, back again.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Darling is here representing AM Vent Capital Group LLC. The city is, is in receipt of a request from AM Vent Capital Group LLC on behalf of NPP 16300 LLC and NPP 16400 LLC to establish a commercial rehabilitation district at 16300 North Park Drive and 16400 North Park Drive. I have a very short presentation that we'd like to go through, which we saw on September 16th, followed by, we're requesting three public hearings with action after each one. The first is to establish the public, the, to establish the district, and then the two other public hearings are for each of the projects to be placed in that district. Again, the request is to establish a district, district at 16300 and 16400 North Park Drive. These are both within the Downtown Development Authority District. These properties were both constructed in 1974. 16400 is a 14-story property, and at one time, 47 of the units were, 47 of the units were sold off to become condominiums. 90 of them remain as rental properties. This property is experiencing significant failure in their water system, as well as roof failures, asphalt, concrete, their parking structure. It's in dire need of assistance, and it's at 85% occupancy right now. 16300 North Park Drive is also 14 stories. All of these units are apartments, and it's experiencing similar issues in terms of, in need of reinvestment. Both of these properties were purchased in 2009-
Correct.
-by AM Vent Capital, and they're looking now to replace the domestic water system to improve the, the parking structure and the asphalt areas, the roofing system, and do rebuild the hallways and the entryways of the different properties.
The, the hallways?
We explained at the Committee of the Whole Meeting the, the poor condition of the pipes and the extensive work it takes to go back into the buildings and install new, a pipe system that mirrors the existing system, so to reduce the amount of any water turnoff and to reduce the amount of negative implications to the occupants of the facility. And so, some of the work has been started. This public act allows for the work to begin prior to approval. You can see that they're planning on redoing the parking structure and the parking lots as the, at the end of the renovation work. And you can see some of the, the common areas that have currently been rebuilt. The tenants that reside in North Park are, tend to be on a lower income side. Many of them are retired with fixed income and living month to month. They can't withstand the rent increases, and so the opportunity to take advantage of this incentive is enabling the, the owners of the property to make some improvements without causing too much of a hardship on the current tenants. Again, this tool's been very effective in the past for the city. We've used it on a variety of different projects, such as the Best Western Premier Dur, to name a few, and it's been very successful in helping to reposition those properties. The owner's looking to make a total of $4 million investment to restore both of the buildings, and during the, the timeframe that these properties are frozen, the city will continue to collect approximately $50,000 in taxes from the owner. That's the end of the presentation.
So, if there's nothing else from you guys at this time, we'd like to open up the public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this particular matter, please come forward.
For the establishment of the district?
This is for the establishment of the district, correct. Please come to the lectern. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fercassi.
I'll move the approval of the Economic Development Initiative A.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we approve the Economic Development Initiative as listed here in our minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, item passes.
The next public hearing is for the request for NPP 16300 LLC for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate under the PA 210. We're recommending a five-year freeze of the values. If the property owner chooses to come back after the fifth year, they would be welcome to come back and seek additional time, should the city council approve that.
Sure, okay. We'd like to open up the public hearing for this matter, the Economic Development Initiative, item B. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Fercassi.
Chairman, I'll move for B, Economic Development Initiative B, and I'd like to make a comment also that, that, you know, we have 17,000 units in the city, and it's really neat to see someone coming forth and be doing some of these older facilities and making them very, very pleasant to the people who stay there.
Agreed.
And our support.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve item B, the Economic Development Initiative application for AM Vent Capital Group. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item passes.
And then the last one is again for NPP 6-
For the other address.
Yeah, 400. Thank you.
Got you.
For five years.
All right, all right. All right, we'll open the public hearing for item C. Any of those, anyone that would like to speak to this matter may come forward. Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fercassi.
I'll move item C, Economic Development Initiative, the application from AM Vent Capital Group LLC.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Fercassi, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the Economic Development Initiative application from AM Vent Capital Group LLC. Are there any other questions or concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item passes.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Thank you very much, and we'll, I'm sure they'll have a grand opening, reopening once it's all finished.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. We appreciate it. All right, so we got Mr. Crowe, you up next.
Petitioner Andrew Mosse from MGA Architects, property located at 24700 Northwestern Highway. It's on the north side of Northwestern Highway between Evergreen Road and Red River Drive. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of 1.8 acres from P vehicular parking to ERO, Education Research Office. This was presented at your last study session. This is the property in question. Currently, there are a number of generators that were required to be installed as part of their backup system and safety protocols with their data center. They also have a number of outside storage items that are not compliant with codes, and they've been cited to clean up the site. These are existing conditions. The rezoning is required in order for them to build a storage facility, so they would, are requesting from vehicular parker, parking to ERO. And that's consistent with the master plan, which designates this area as city center subarea. There is also a separate site plan after the public hearing, and if you approve the rezoning, we'll get in separate action on the site plan, but I will go through that for the council and the audience, so they understand why their request for the rezoning is to construct approximately 10,000 square foot equipment storage building in the parking lot east of the existing building, located in this area here, and also to provide some additional screening, increase the wall height, and put some additional landscaping to screen the generators that were previously installed. And I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Mosse. At the time of the site plan, we'll get into it, but we have to hold our public hearing on the rezoning first.
Okay. All right. So, we'd like to open up the public hearing for this rezoning request for MGA Architects, PR, PZR 19-004. If anyone would like to speak to this particular matter, please come forward to the lectern. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I'd like to move PZR 19-0004.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve PZR 19-0004, rezoning request for MGA Architects. Are there any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to introduce ordinance number 1711, the rezoning request for MGA Architects.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Fracassi, that we introduce ordinance number 1711, the rezoning request for MGA Architects. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And our next item.
Ordinance is introduced.
Our next item is considering the actual site plan, PSP 19-0004, site plan, review request of Andrew Mosse, MGA Architects, to construct a 9,989 square foot equipment storage building in the parking lot east of the existing building, property located at 24700 Northwestern Highway. And I'm going to turn it over, Mr. Mosse, to talk about the specifics of the site plan and the proposed building, and your clicker's right there for you.
Can you please give us your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly. Andrew Mosse, Mosse Gordon Associates, 4351 Delamere Court, Royal Oak. Good evening. We've been working with the Planning Commission, excuse me, Planning Commission and Planning Department to refine this proposal over the last several months, to clean up the site that, you know, has become a bit of a problem, provide outside storage, and also to provide screening for the new corridor. We're proposing a new building, let's see, go to this, a new building here that is designed to emulate the existing buildings, the tower, which is part of 123 Net's property, and the two other smaller buildings. The building will be precast concrete with metal siding painted dark to try to emulate windows of the, of the building. It'll be a solid building. The other feature of the project is, well, is the screen wall to, screen wall and screen, screen plantings to, trying to obscure the existing generators installed for, to support the data center. Here you see that we've shown visibility at the time of planting. The, the plan is to raise the existing wall, which is about forty-two, I think fifty-four inches, up to eight feet, which is the maximum allowed by code. Along with that, we're going to be planting a row of arborvitae immediately in front of it, that, at eight feet tall. And then, over the next three years, it's an estimate of what it'll, it'll look like. We'll see how, you know, how quickly the arborvitae grow, allegedly a foot a year. Also, in addition to, oh, we're on our way. In addition to the building and the screen wall, we're going to be updating the landscape on the, on the site, filling beds, replacing deceased trees. This wasn't updated, but there's some more green space going to be added to the north side of the proposed building to try and soften the site and provide more green space.
If you could, through the Cherokee, talk about some additional fencing and security measures they're doing on the site as well.
That's true. One of the, several elements go to the promotion of a, of a data center. One is, you know, cooling provided by coolers on site and alternate power supplies in case of power failure, as well as security. In addition to the wall here, we're going to be having a fence along here, and a fence here to provide security for the generators and cooling equipment, something that our clients, customers all desire. The building has security. The building is empty when a client purchased it, and he's converting it for his own use for offices on the sixth and seventh floor for him and his some tenants, and two, three, four, and five are, are to become gener, excuse me, data centers as well as the basements. Thank you, and I hope you approve us.
Counsel? Any questions?
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Morris.
I have a quick question. Your schematic, with regards to the trees that you're planting, it stops short of providing the buffering for the new storage facility that you're building. Is there a reason for that?
Well, didn't really think buildings needed, you know, screening as much as the generators did. And we, there is a wall, the existing wall, this is, you know, from a photo, the existing wall, it's there.
Right, so the existing wall, you said, is, is going to be, the height is going to be increased?
In this area where the genera, I'm sorry. In the area, I got, I don't think I can, it, yeah, I'll show it back there. In, in the area where the generators are, we're raising the wall.
Okay.
This wall's staying where, this is the height it is. We'll, you know, do some repair work on it.
So you didn't think it, we needed to put the trees to block that?
Architects don't like replating, screening their buildings, even as you, even, even if they're very utilitarian.
It's just that, I just realized those yellow storage units were there as our neighborhood traffic has been routed because of the construction on Ten Mile, and so, we go right to it every day to get out of it.
Yeah, those, those are generators.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Does 123 Net all own all three buildings?
No, the, they only own the tower.
Okay.
The building facing Ten Mile is owned, owned by a real estate group out of Atlanta, I believe.
Okay.
At least last I heard. Three floors of it are data center for Level One. Fourth floor was a college, I'm not sure what's there now. The other building was owned by the owners of Zedman's, and I heard they leased it, but I don't know.
Mr. Mandelbaum?
Thank you.
Sorry. Do you have anything else, Mr. Mayor?
No.
Okay. Mr. Mandelbaum?
Yes. After you're done with all the construction and, and the planting, will you be repaving the parking, the parking lot? Or resurfacing it?
Um, I'd probably maybe resealing it, and, and I think restriping is part of the, the plan.
Okay, thank you.
You know, that does go back to my question. How, so there are three separate, although there are three buildings, there are three separate entities, then?
Yes.
And how, and so I assume, okay.
Yeah, you can see here, this is ours, and then this is the Ten Mile parcel, and then the other parcel.
Thank you, I missed the dark line. Okay. Thank you.
Through, through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Crowe.
To Ms. Morris. We could, an additional requirement is, is work with the applicant to put like maybe three to five deciduous trees, just to break it up a little bit. I don't know if the arborvitae's all across would be appropriate. There is some utility lines, but we certainly could plant some street trees in that green space, just to break it up a little bit.
I like that.
So you can make that as an additional condition to our, our favorable recommendation.
Okay.
And then we'll work, we'll work to make sure it's, it's done in, in a proper way. We are going to be working around some overhead utilities, but we, I'm sure we can find some places for a few trees.
Thank you.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fracassi.
As to the city planner, because of the nature of these buildings being in architects, award-winning buildings, that when something comes to us, we'd like, I personally would like to see it come before the site plan committee, so that we could look at it and make sure that the, the architecture stays at least the same, or matches it.
Yeah, that's a fair question. The original proposal was a kind of a metal butler building with a hip roof, and to your very point, the Plan Commission wanted them to make it designed to blend, or at least complement more of the existing building's architecture, and that's how we came up with that final solution.
Anything else from counsel? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the site plan.
I'll support it, Mr. Chairman.
With the recommended changes.
With the recommended changes.
There we go, all right. It's been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Mr. Fracassi, that we approve site plan, PSP 19-004, with additional recommendations by Councilwoman Morris. Are there any other questions or concerns?
Wasn't it Sandy Rosen that did these buildings?
Yes.
He was on the planning board, too, at his own field.
I believe so.
Yeah.
When I worked for him, I don't, he may have been as, as well.
Yes, quite a man, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Site plan passes.
Thank you.
All set. Thank you very much. Don, you can't keep cutting in the middle of motions now. Okay. You ain't paying no attention to me. All right, we're going to move on to the communications portion of the meeting. First request for recognition is Pamela Gerald. Don't believe she is here this evening. The next request is Gerard Mullin, which I don't see here as well. Next request is Mr. Keith Harris.
Keith Harris, with All Race and Life Matter, P.O. Box 2679, zip code 48037. You know, every time you see me come here, I always use the phrase, "All Race and Life Matter." I truly believe that. I get a lot of great feedback. I like to say, "I really commend you, Ms. Morris, for standing by your community." I really commend you, Don Pacowski. You, I don't know if you're a Republican or a Democrat. I'm a lifelong Democrat, but I do appreciate if you are a Republican, speaking up against some of the bad decisions that some of our Democratic elected individuals make. You know, I was looking at an ad in the paper from Ferndale and Royal Oak about the overbuilding of their community, and how it created rats, just an infestation of rodents. Rodents sitting on people's window seals because they overbuilt their community. We cannot turn these empty school lots into an apartment complexes or condos. We have to fill, like you said, the seventeen thousand we already have. Then the other thing we have to focus on is our kids' education. We need to focus on building new schools, new schools in Southfield. We cannot just keep making bad decisions and, and thinking by bringing, overbuilding our community, we're going to have a better tax base. That, that's not the solution. What we're going to have is slums. We got to do a much, much better job of how we do things. We're going to be challenging some of the 14th District Democratic Party to a debate on some of the, the poor decisions that they have made. We got a very good debate team that we put together, some very good people. We're going to be challenging Mayor Ken Sivers, Mandelbaum, and even city manager. Hopefully, they take us up on our invitation, because hopefully, we're going to try to get it televised. We're no longer going to stand still for the absolutely poor decisions that even Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence have made. The poor decisions of Gretchen Wilmore would fix the damn roads without raising up, raising the damn minimum wage. We got to do better. We pay you people, I mean, we elect you people to do better for us, to think better, put us first. I just want to say, I'm a lifelong Democrat, but I'm really sorry today that I am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me answer, Mr. Sir.
Yes.
Let me answer, Mr. Harris. Yes, I belong to the later Democratic Club. However, I was at Kennedy's night the other night, and, and I guess I wasn't up snuff with my dues, so they wouldn't let me talk, so I'm glad. I don't know if I'm going to belong to them or not, but God bless you, man.
All right. All good. Thank you.
Our next request for recognition is Ms. Stacy Jackson. And if I could, Mr. Harris, I just wanted to say, I appreciate your passion about the schools and, and our children in this community, and I would encourage you, if you haven't already, to go to one of the school board meetings and talk to them about that, and they would have more jurisdiction over what happens, to some degree, with those schools as well, now. Just a suggestion to you, that's all.
Stacy Jackson, 21685 Rougewood Drive, Southfield, Michigan, 48033. I understand that there are over, slightly over seventy thousand residents in the city of Southfield, and while I see that and feel in my heart that all seventy thousand of those are Southfield family, seventy percent of those are connected to me ancestrally and culturally, of a tree, of many branches that link to me. There are five people in front of me that are always here, and one that always sits to the left when I come to this podium. Publicly speaking, we know that one of those are not here with us tonight, but Madam Clerk, if you're watching, my family stands in support of you through this trying time. Having said that, I'd like to move forward on why I'm here. Today marks officially one full year since I've stood before you with sixty residents, twenty of which were association presidents across this, this city. Thousands of residents are in jeopardy of losing their homes due to the septic tank crisis. I've watched from the back, where you had bulleted points from one presenter, saying that there were seniors and low-income and living month to month, and for that reason, that property owner couldn't afford. and living month to month, and for that reason, that property owner couldn't afford to do these infrastructure calls. While I say to you, those sixty residents came before you and verbally expressed all of those same bullet points that they were gonna have and lose their homes. From that day to this one, there's been no public approach or resolve to the community about this. In fact, when I tried to reach out, using a diplomatic and form of democracy to speak with all of these association presidents, one member, the mayor of our city, who I've always deemed that title and position to be the spirit of a city, actually reached out to the community as if there were some inaccuracies. Well, personally, what I've done was spent an entire year coming before you to present facts that we were not presenting inaccuracies, that this problem existed and there's still no resolve. Last week, I saw us, another presenter presented something saying that they had spent twenty million or forty million with water and sewage pipes. Not one of those pipes ran through Circle Drive, Hooper, Simmons Avenue. In fact, the city has done not a good job in expressing to the residents on what they did with the first forty million dollars that was supposed to run sewer lines throughout the entire city. Just as we stand before and come before you and you give support to other residents across the city, whether it's this art or whatever, at this time, because there's been nothing publicly said to me, I am forced to believe that what I feel as a constituent and a human being in this city does not matter. I am disgraced by that.
Thank you. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Joseph Person.
Mayor, President, Madam Clerk, and everybody else, you know, the elephant in the room, y'all act like y'all, you know, we're at a wake. What happened today, you know, for me is unconscionable. Yes, I supported, you know, the Madam Clerk, Shereeka Hawkins, all the way to the Hilton. I'm a supporter now. The problem I have with all of this, the good, the bad, and the ugly, the ugly over there in Detroit, where we just had an election in twenty sixteen, Garland Gilchrist against that city clerk, and all of a sudden absentee ballots came up and all kind of shenanigans went on. No prosecution, no investigation. We could go on and on and on. When they recounted in twenty sixteen for the presidential election, they had ballot boxes that had been broken in, and all of these different kind of shenanigans, and nothing happened. And now we have a situation where Ms. Johnson and Vincent said, "Nothing happened. It didn't change the outcome of the election." But yet and still, we're gonna make an example out of the first black woman that's a clerk here. And in the past, there've been several people. I've been here twelve years, I'm sorry, eleven years, come February in Southfield. And I've heard many a people speak up here, including one of the people that just spoke up here about absentee ballots and issues that we had in terms of the person that ran the city clerk prior to Ms. Shereeka Hawkins, and nothing was done. I just, it's just hard for me to fathom that a person of that high esteem would just throw their life away, throw away their career, do all of these things. And here's the thing, Friday, they were going to arrest her. But the reason they didn't is 'cause some of the folks that I know and myself stepped in and said, "You wouldn't have did this to anybody else. If it'd been part of the good old boys, you'd have let them resign, retire, put them on probation, or do something else." But when you have all of the shenanigans that have happened politically around the city of Detroit, in the state of Michigan, there's questions about a lot of things, how is it that we pick and choose? And yes, we talk about good Democrats. Okay, Mr. Ficassi, the reason that you weren't allowed to speak is 'cause not only had you not paid your dues, you hadn't paid your dues for the last two or three years. That's a fact, okay? But, but, you know, but you had the right. We allowed you, just like everybody else, to come if you wanted to just speak at the beginning. But the people who were members, car carrier members, members in good standing were allowed to be, you know, we had a vote for them. Thank you. But again, you know, we stand in solidarity with our Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, just let me correct that statement. In March of two thousand eighteen, those dues were paid. I had no receipt on it. I had no billing. We're the ones in two thousand nineteen. If I was up to date, I've belonged to that club almost twenty years.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ficassi. Our next request for recognition is Greg Keeler.
Greg Keeler, resident, Southfield. This past Friday was Global Climate Change Strike Day. And there's a bunch of kids throughout the world that went out on strike. It happens to be our youth. And then there was also a strike today to stop, to stop the global warming initiative again in Washington, D.C. I see as we do all these different plans for different buildings being built in the city of Southfield and everything else, the biggest thing that the youth wanted to get rid of is the fact of the use of fossil fuels in changing our climate and climate warming. What I can't understand for the life of me is, how come we are not putting any buildings into the city that are geothermal, which is heating and cooling, which does not leave a carbon footprint? Or maybe that should be the question we ask most of the companies as a company, "How big is your carbon footprint since you have made it spectacle of being green?" The state Capitol has now gone to green buildings for heating and cooling. Monroe Community College has gone to geothermal for heating and cooling. Kid County has gone to geotherm cooling for its correctional center. Plenty of neighborhoods have gone to that. And then the fascinating thing was, when I was teaching green energy, I took a bunch of students on a field trip. The field trip we went to was Lawrence Tech, which put down a hundred and twenty-one holes for geothermal heating and cooling. That was ten years ago. How come y'all are still not there as far as putting it in any of your buildings? Can't say you don't know it, because I spoke to one of the people here that actually knew about it, because I told them about everything we were working on and everything we were looking on, on moving into the future. So why are we moving back to dinosaur age? Why are we not looking at what is our carbon footprint? Since that is the biggest, one of the biggest issues we have right now. What y'all doing for green? Mint skill. What we had elected officials answer the questions on, they talked about cardboard boxes, recycling, the bare metal. Think about our future. You're destroying the schools. You're not doing anything to get rid of the carbon footprint. So what are you really doing for the, you for our future?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Keeler. Our next request for recognition is Mr. Louis Williams.
Louis Williams, good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to express my continued opposition to the selling of a portion of the Northland property to a marijuana grow business, medical or otherwise. And the thought comes to me, certainly there must be some other viable business that that portion of the property could be sold to. And I ask that you find council persons further consider that possibility. There are too many potential negatives attached to having a marijuana grow business in our community. And I ask the question, basic, simple, why take that chance? I remind you that our police chief spoke on this subject at a recent meeting. While he did not take a position on the sale to this entity, he did express, from, I took from what he was saying, he had concerns about issues, negative impact of having this business in our community, based on his previous experiences. And I'm asking the question, because of the potential problems, why take that chance? We don't know enough about it. At a recent meeting, one of the speakers, one of the presenters, I don't, I don't know if he didn't wanna fully commit himself or what, but he didn't have very much information. And it's something this important, something this vital, I think we need to know as much about it as possible. From what we do know, it causes me concerns. And I'm sure other citizens as well. We don't wanna do anything that's gonna negatively impact this city or its citizens. And I suggest to you that having a marijuana grow business at the Northland property will negative impact, negatively impact us. If you're not ready to vote against that tonight, I ask that you consider Councilwoman Morris's recent suggestion that you have a town hall meeting where you can hear from more of our citizens on this very important subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. All right, that concludes our communications portion of the meeting. We'll move to the council portion. We have one item to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move the approval of the travel expense for Council President Cruz to the Congressional Black Caucus Conference.
Support.
The move by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the travel expense for Lloyd Cruz, attendance to the Congressional Black Caucus Conference. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain. I would like to start off on, before any of the other council members may have something else to say, but just to speak as it relates to the matter regarding our clerk, it was brought up here just in communications, and some may have seen it on the news, but we want to have an official statement on behalf of the city. And I'll just read that to you now. The city of Southfield is continuing to gather all of the pertinent facts associated with the Michigan Attorney General's Office's investigation of Southfield City Clerk, Shereeka Hawkins. The city does not have all of the facts, and at this time, there will be no rush to judgment. The city will also be conducting a thorough internal investigation and review of these charges. After the city has examined the underlying facts of this matter, we will explore all appropriate and legal avenues to protect the voting process and rights of the Southfield citizens. Mrs. Hawkins will be on administrative leave with pay at this time. The city of Southfield will continue to fully cooperate with the State of Michigan Attorney General's Office as well as the Michigan State Police. So until further information is gathered, as stated, this is our statement as it relates to this matter. Counsel, any other items?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ficassi.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go back to the lady who spoke on the septic. The mayor did have a, I think it was at Levy School, wasn't it, when you had that septic?
Yeah, we did.
Great Health Department and everything.
We had an information meeting with Oakland County.
And I think we should have had several more, because, you know, it seems like nothing was really done to directly approach it. And I'm just wondering if we could get somehow, some way, how many septic we have in the city and find out what the cost would be to give a better discount, even if you take that total amount and bond for it and let the people pay off the bonds, which would be much cheaper than with three percent, is it now? Something like that?
We have zero percent loan and not three percent.
But isn't bond about three percent?
Interest rates are in the three percent. Interest rates in the bond market are in the three percent. You're roughly talking fifteen hundred people. You've got people who paid for their own. You've got some equitable issues. And you still have this fundamental issue. There is what is public versus private. And what our residents are asked to pay for is the private section of that ordinance. That ordinance was put in place in ninety-eight. This is, the city owns the pipes in the right of way. You're responsible for connecting to that. We ask people to pay a tap fee and the cost of installing that line. That is a private function. I've had conversations in two thousand and ten, as recently as in last April. That is still a private function, and it's considered unlawful for the city's water department to pay for that. I mean, that, that's the fundamental issue in this. We went through it.
I hear you. I hear you. I'm just trying to say, I know my daughter was on Nine Mile Road and the septic field was in the back of the house, boarding the roof. Her amount was some eighteen thousand dollars to tap into the sewer. And fortunately, both my daughter and son-in-law both work. But you're talking about individuals that are single homeowners or things like that, where I think, I mean, I'd like to see us really get down and see how we could help these people. And it's not politically saying this, but I know what the expense is. And if you pay, you know, I think my daughter pays three percent on the loan or something like that. But, you know, it depends on what the income is of the people. And when I see how many foreclosures we had in the city, it just makes me sick, really. You know, we may take care of twenty-five homes that are foreclosed and taken under control, but there's another four hundred that are still, you know, in foreclosure. And I just know that we've never had that many. And I just think that we start looking seriously at this. I mean, we, we talk about, you know, giving deals to, having special things for the commercial people, which I'm part of, which I don't get any money from. But I know that there's more things for commercial people to take advantage of than they have residential. And like I said, it's not a political speech. This is for fact.
Right.
And I just think that, you know, we had a meeting, I think that was a very successful meeting that the mayor had, and a lot of things surfaced there. But then we heard all the people talk and it kind of dropped.
When this ordinance was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight, there was a seven thousand dollar fee for roughly two thousand people. As part of the funding on it, it was supposed to generate fourteen million dollars. I can, don't have the exact figures, but as of today, it has not generated the rest of that, that fourteen million dollar figure. The fact is, most of that debt is retired. Two years ago, I believe, we dropped the rate from seven thousand to five thousand. So there was an adjustment. If there's, you know, I, I was not here when the city put that structure in place. I'm not sure if I would have recommended that type of structure. But what you have are people, the other, you know, sake of this conversation, the other sixteen thousand single-family homes and the other customers are basically paying for that, for that private function of these two thousand homes. You've got an equitable question. And you really, I gotta tell you, really need to be careful there, because the case law is not in your favor. So you've already dropped the fee, two thousand dollars per home, and that connects- So, you've already dropped the fee, two thousand dollars per home, and that connection is a private function.
Well, you know, Mr. Zorn, you know, real estate people don't, don't tell people that your taxes are going up when you buy a house. They kind of ignore that little thing when they sell these homes. And similarly, I don't think that these sellers, or real estate people, go and say you're on a septic either. And, and so, you know, it's very unfortunate, but maybe we could get these real estate people to, to be forced to give those kinds of information to the buyer. And I know they don't do that, you know? And I just think that we can do something to, to help those people out. I'm just raising that, like I said, because you're going to have more foreclosures. Why should we, you know, have more foreclosures? Then what happens? Do people just leave a vacant home? I mean, you know, I mean, I'd like to really go into that, and find out how we can do that, you know? Put in sewers, and, and, you know, you, the first original part of those sewers on the West Side, you know, we were going to send water down the rouge, and the people on the West Side took us to court.
Speaking of the rouge.
And then we put in a sewer.
This is about pollution control. Speaking of the rouge, this is about pollution control. We have had backyards percolating, human fecal material, as well as waste going into the rouge.
Yeah, I'm saying, yeah, but behind the McDonald Towers, the sewer is under the water. All right? And there are ways that these sewers can be put. It was unfortunate, they took us to court, what were their names? Mayor knows. Who took it? Runkle? No, not Runkle. Anyways, the West Side taxpayers.
If I may also remind you.
The West Side Taxpayers League took us to court.
Let me also remind the council, in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, when this ordinance was passed in ninety, in ninety-eight, there was also what was called a ready-to-serve fee. In other words, everyone who lived in the, this area, they were paying a water rate because the sewer was available. They weren't paying for sewer, but they were paying a ready-to-serve. That was also eliminated. That was also one of the potential, that was, one of the ways this debt was to be retired. I will tell you in my conversation with, in April, with M.D., with now Eagle M.D.Q., as well as our state senator, I, I have asked for enabling legislation, where they better redefine what is public and private. And I think there's a legislative piece on this, too. But right now, as I said, the, the case law's not in your favor, that private versus public. I mean, this is considered a private function. Our function is that, that public line, where the homeowner connects to. And if, if I may also, most of the home inspection reports I've seen identify those homes that were on septic. I've yet to, seen one report where the homeowner brought it in, and they, they failed to identify they're on septic. Obviously, I am empathetic to folks who bought homes from banks, or vacant homes that were checked, no prior knowledge, but for those homeowners, who bought those homes and had inspections, it was identified that they were on septic.
Yeah, Mr. Urex was the guy, remember Urex? He was over there in John Grace area? The other one was on, the other one was on the school board, what was his name? Gentlemen. Anyway, they had that West Side tax league situation. I'm just bringing that up, I mean, you just can't let it sit, maybe, whatever it is, you know? And like I said, you've got to feel sorry for those, that many people. And you look at what's, you know, what would happen if they go down, it's the same thing as we're dealing with foreclosures. You know, it's just another problem that the city has, and we don't talk about it. It's just there, and so we go back to, you know, what the ordinance is. Well, we set the ordinances.
We, we spent a good hour and a half discussing this, I believe it was a month of April, going through a full update. The administration's happy to do that again.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Morris?
Yes, two things. On Friday, September thirteenth, the Economic Development Committee met, and we had a presentation regarding Ever Center. And we unanimously voted to allow the council to hear the same presentation. So I was hoping that this evening, we could get that on the October seventh regular meeting, if that's possible. And then to Councilman Fracassi's comments, can we just have, it bothers me that Ms. Jackson was saying that, you know, she's ashamed that we haven't dealt with this issue for about a year now, and we have been talking about it. We, we had a discussion, like Fred said, in April. Mayor went to the meeting with the community. But Ms. Jackson, can you come back up to the microphone? I just would like to ask you, what is it that you would like for council to do with regards to this situation?
Thank you for allowing me a chance to come back and speak. First, I'd like the council not to overlook the fact that residents are aware that this ordinance wasn't enacted in nineteen ninety-eight. It is only fair for the council to also recognize that the city themselves failed to adequately and fairly enforce and implement this ordinance for twenty years. So, an entire community, when it was enacted, was allowed to live freely, without inspections, without any of this chaos. So it waited, and to the population of Southfield residents had shifted gears in the paradigm of white residents, to a predominantly African-American community, and seniors. And then it rolled out in twenty sixteen. There's been no mention, not one house in this city received inspections every three years, per the ordinance, from nineteen ninety-eight to twenty sixteen. Otherwise, just in enacting the ordinance, that would have been a matter of public record, so that residents purchasing the home would understand that they had a septic, one, and two, that it had to be inspected every three years, therefore not encumbering this large expense in the first place. That's number one, accountability. Number two, the second thing I noticed, is that residents are being forced to get these inspections done, or certifications, in thirty days. Well, the city has to be mindful that you're sending out thousands of these, these letters out to Southfield residents, and only a small pool of people are coming down to the city to do these inspections for us. They're not going to get done in thirty days. I have come to this podium and asked, maybe you can extend that, from thirty days to ninety days? Nothing's been said about that. That's something that a person can do with typing a letter and sending it out, changing it. I've even come to the podium and said that the letter itself is threatening to the residents. It took a year before our code enforcement director literally reached out to other municipalities and said, "Yeah, folks, compared to other cities dealing with this, we are mean." But the letter still hasn't changed. So it made it feel like we're not being heard. The fact that our city manager has actually stood here and said that, "Hey, we've got, I don't know the number, but it's twelve hundred people with septic tanks." Well, in nineteen ninety-eight, it was only sixteen hundred. And according to your own public records, Oakland County said that over half of those septic tanks in nineteen ninety-eight failed, and were in need of a repair. So what happened? So I guess the point that bothered me so, or still bothers me, is that residents came here with genuine concerns about their households, their homes, our mitvus, if you will. And nothing was said. I was told that I was inaccurate, when I was telling the truth. I was told that it was wrong, when it is real. So this very night, and once again, the one person that I probably have the least in common with, is always the one who brings it to the floor, "Mr. Fracassi, I appreciate you." Because you're not afraid to tackle tough questions, even when you don't know the answer. So not once did you call me a liar, not once did you say I was inaccurate, you just said, "Hey, I'm really sorry, I don't know how to fix it." That's honesty. I respect that. And I also respect you two ladies for bringing me back to say that.
Okay, so, so just to be clear, so there's two things that you've identified. One, you'd like to extend the inspection timeframe from thirty days to ninety days.
Absolutely.
Two, you'd like for the letter, which I have not seen the letter, you'd like the letter to be more friendly to the residents. It's intimidating, you said.
There's a way to say, "Hey, it's time to get your septic tank inspected," without saying, "I'm going to take your home, you've got thirty days to do it, or else, or you'll be fined and ticketed and sent to court." Now, if you're a seventy-year-old senior, and you get something like that, and you're calling these companies, and they're saying, "We're booked, I'm sorry, I can't get out for another fifty days," what are you to think?
Fred, can you provide us with a copy of the letter?
Yeah, this will be the third time we provide the letters to council.
I've not seen it.
Previously, six letters, we'll resubmit them. On the second round, we've now completed our first three years of getting through. I, I would have to have some information. We started, I believe, in sixteen, so we've gone through a full three-year cycle. And I'll get, there, there have been revisions to the letters. I believe we're now using five different letters, that do step up, and the tone does increase, and we work with people. I'll also remind you that this council approved for income-eligible families, where we have an interest-free deferred loan, the equivalent to our home improvement program. But I'll get the most recent five letters, and then, we do a lot of hand-holding through the process. We try to not get people into the court system, but work with them through. The letter does speak up in tone, and yes, we do say thirty days, because that was the language in the ordinance. Now, we could say ninety days, but then after ninety days, do we send a second letter and say ninety days? And then the third one that says ninety days? I mean, they speak up with timelines, so that people can meet them. And again, we do, the plumbing inspector goes out to homes, code goes out to homes, we work with people getting through the inspections. We've even worked with people in the timing of their inspections. It has been a very wet year, and this isn't probably the ideal time to be doing that, but we try to get people to go through some of this in June and July, when there was less water. And we, we really do try to work. I'll, I'll have the code enforcement group put together the current batch of letters, because we are starting that second cycle.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we publicly address this concern, if it's possible to do the thirty to ninety days of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just going to say, in addition to that, could we also ask that they would soften the letter, so it's not so threatening?
We, we are happy to have council taking a reviewing that. I believe the first couple of letters are soft. It's that third letter, the fourth one, where the tone does pick up, that, you know, there are, the city does have certain police powers, we don't like to use them. No one has been evicted in their home, because of the septic process, through this process. We've had people living in conditions that we have been very concerned, that they're not safe to be living in. We've had homes of people who are still on wells, and we know there are fecal material leaching out of that field, and they're using their wells. We seem to come up with two of those a year. We're working to protect those. But we're happy to present all five letters, and do a review of the language, but they do progressively pick up in tone.
Right, and I understand that, but I, I have received one of the letters from one of the seniors, and it was her first. And we did contact code enforcement, and we did get the thirty days extended, but it was, you know, because of that involvement, and I had to contact them, and code is willing to work with them. But if we could change that language, I'm, I'm, once we see the letters, you'll see what I'm talking about. It is very, and if you're a senior, and you get information like that, it is pretty frightening.
And the strategy is try to get through a third of these each years, and we are reducing the number. And when I'm asked, you know, where did we choose to start? I know we started in Section Thirty-One, the John Grace neighborhood, because that year, we made us over a six million dollar investment in public infrastructure.
Okay, and I also know that we have a limited number of vendors that are willing to, to do the work. So that created another concern. So I'm just asking that we look at all the pieces when we send these letters out? Because, and then, you know, we know about the weather, too, so when we put thirty days and the ground is wet, and we can't do it, we know, we're already saying that to the homeowners, you're not going to meet this thirty days.
And, and I just like to, you know, I have conceded all along, that this was not done correctly in the beginning in ninety-eight. I, I acknowledge it. But the city doesn't know who lives in what homes.
One year later.
Or all they are, or, or what ethnicity or color people are. There have been a number of charges that we're blind to a lot of those, those things. I don't know who lives in what homes. There are people, though, who've had their homes inspected every three years, when the county was administering the program. The basic math on this program never added up. The county was under contract to do these inspections, with almost, you know, two thousand homes is, is the number that all the original modeling is based on, and they never got through more than ninety inspections a year. That was part of the reasons why we put the brakes on it, and then the reports weren't coming to the city. I mean, this is all going back to twenty ten, twenty eleven, and what we put in place in twenty sixteen, you know, frankly, the other driver on it was at that point, the federal government was coming into communities that had federal dollars come in. This was a state revolving loan money. The source of that money is federal EPA dollars that came into Southfield. There were communities in Ohio and Illinois, where city councils and elected officials were, were being sent to jail for not enforcing these ordinances. We knew we had to do something. Some of us thought the two thousand sixteen election was going to go in a very different direction. Earlier this evening, we had a gentleman speaking about global warming, and, and those issues. Well, this pollution control is very much part of it. As taxpayers, we've spent millions of dollars cleaning up the Rouge River, and we still have materials leaching into it. And as our climate changes, and as we experience greater and more wetter areas, having septic disposal, sewage disposal systems that properly work, is a basic function of a modern government. There is a failed public policy level at this state, that they haven't been able to come up with, address stormwater, or, or, or septic sewer. How many days, when you listen to the radio in the summer, is Metro Beach shut down? This is because of all of our peers up in Clinton Township, and Shelby Township, they're on, they're on septic, too. They've at least figured out how to finance the system, and get the majority of our people connected. Now it's that painful step of asking a homeowner to pay for a function. Got to remember, our homes are fifty, sixty years old. Fifty, sixty years old. The life of a septic system is usually thirty, thirty, forty years. So we've got a lot of people who are coming into that point. I also did ask the state in conversations with Eagle, for enabling legislation to support the types of programs we have, for both the loan, and the income-eligible loan program.
And through the chair, just so, just for the record, the homeowners and the seniors that I've spoken with, did not object to having the inspection and doing whatever needed to be done. They objected to the threatening letter, and the thirty days, which are the things that I think we're going to address when we get copies of it.
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
Thank you. I might also add that there, in Philadelphia, they actually had a similar situation, and what their city was successfully able to do was provide an option. They provided an option for, for their residents to keep their septic, or connect to city sewer, and they were able to find a solution where the flat rate cost to connect by septic was ten thousand dollars. The flat rate to connect to city sewer, ten thousand dollars. Much easier to finance as a homeowner than sixty, seventy thousand dollars, which is the rate that many of the properties in my community would go for.
Our, I'm, I'm sorry, our average is running thirteen thousand. We do have the anomaly, and I can, I can present three years' worth of data to show you our average.
That's, that's fine, but the, the whole purpose of my point is that this ordinance wasn't acted in nineteen ninety-eight, and for whatever reason, it was not implemented correctly. As far as the city knowing who's inside of the homes, well, the population ratio tells you who's inside the home, because in nineteen ninety-eight, there were probably seventy percent white population. So you know seventy percent of those populations, you know who's in the house. So this isn't about a matter of people being racist, it's about the implication of the ordinance itself, that has a bias. So I not once called anyone here racist, but the application of how you enforce the ordinance very much is. And the fact that I am- And the fact that I am here today, and thank you for the acknowledgement, but it did take one full year of me being told that I was inaccurate or wasn't right. None of the records added up. The city dropped the ball. Residents did not receive any inspections whatsoever. Whether it was the county or the federal government, it was the city's ordinance and their responsibility to make sure those documents reached them. So I appreciate you all bringing me back to the podium.
Thank you.
I thank you.
Thank you so much.
Screw.
Yes, Mr. Brightwell.
I know, I know this is a problem, and it has been an ongoing problem for a couple of years, and it pops up. And I appreciate Mrs. Jackson's constantly reinforcing the fact that it is a problem for our population. I wanna nip, see if I can nip something in the bud. This has been floating around through the attorney and also through Mrs. Zorn with your knowledge. Can we get an ordinance, point-of-sale ordinance, making sure the realtors identify? Although it's there on your bill of sale sheet. I know, when I look on that sheet, it tells me everything I wanna know about my house when I purchase it. But obviously, we have a system in America where the buyer has to be aware. Perhaps we can get a point-of-sale ordinance in the city of Southfield. When you sell a house, you gotta tell a person, this thing is on a septic. Does that make sense?
There is a state law that requires disclosure. But one of the issues is with the foreclosure crisis. If you have no prior knowledge, you just simply check, no prior knowledge. And that's where, that's done an awful lot of damage. But if I were buying a home, a bank-foreclosed home, you've simply gotta check, no prior knowledge. If a person came in and checked the city's records at that time, they might have gotten an answer. Today, we have a very solid database of who's connected now. But if you did an inspection, most of your home inspections, everyone, every person who's brought a home inspections in that had shared it with me, I've quickly been able to say, right here it is. I recognize it's a very exciting time, you're happy to be buying a home. And a lot of people miss that, or don't quite underestimate, they're underestimating the financial hit. And that's like having to put two roofs on your house. I mean, that's, you know, it's, it's a, you know, thirteen, that's a big bill.
Sure, I get that, and I know this is a function of the human condition, and it could be a function of the weather that day. But can we, does it make sense to have an ordinance in the city of Southfield?
For point-of-sale? I've been a long advocate of point-of-sale ordinance. I can tell you, in the real estate market, the local realtors aren't wild about it. But that is, the local realtors are not wild about it.
Right, right.
But that is another way to protect the consumer. You know, I'm gonna, in two thousand ten, you had, you weren't inspecting vacant homes. You, 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 in the last ten years, the city's put in a lot of controls to tighten these up. You, if a home sits vacant, they're supposed to register the home and go through it. So it shouldn't be happening, but a point-of-sale would be one way to tighten that up.
Yeah, I'm looking for the future. I mean, the past is the past, and we're dealing with that now. So just as, this is a small item. Maybe Mrs. Jones and Mr. Brown, they won't be impacted with this because they acknowledged at that point of sale, they have a septic tank. I know the realtors don't want it, because that might turn off a sale. But if this is a little simple approach to maybe one family, another, two families won't be hit with this particular unknown incident. So I know what I need to do is just get a note going back to the legislative committee. But the finance chair seems to be sending a whole lot of stuff to the legislative committee these days. So with respect to point-of-sale ordinance in this Southfield, people have, the realtors have to inform the potential buyer that this is on septic tank. So I will get a note going.
Legislative committee will look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Fraser?
Yes. I didn't really wanna prolong this conversation, but I'm gonna have to. I'm not so sure that I agree with Mr. Brightwell, because a knee-jerk reaction can cause unintended consequences, just like putting in the sewers caused unintended consequences. Let me go back to the original point, 'cause I was on council when it happened. Our Public Works Director, Tom Vukovich, had people that lived on the west side that septic tanks failed, and they came to him and said, why don't you put in sewers down here so I could connect to the sewers? And we have a longstanding rule that if a resident wants something, whether it's sidewalks, whether it's sewers, whatever, sixty percent of the homeowners have to sign on a petition in order to make that happen. And then the city starts the process of making it happen. So he would tell them, well, you go get your neighbors to sign on a petition, get sixty percent of the neighbors to sign on a petition, and we'll put sewers in. So that person went back and started talking to the neighbors. And they said, no, there's nothing wrong with my septic tank, and so I'm happy with it. I'm not gonna sign to have sewers put in. So the person spent whatever he had to spend, fifteen thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars, to put in a new septic system. A year later or so, somebody on that same street, theirs failed. Started the whole process over again. So after a few years of that, Tom Vukovich came to the council and said, why don't we get ahead of this, because right now, we're just playing leapfrog. So let's bite the bullet, put the sewers in, so that when people's septic system fails, the sewers will be there so that they can tie into it. When we did that, and we put the, we started talking to the people, we're gonna put the sewers in, and then you're gonna tie into the sewers, he almost got strung up, because they interpreted it as, you have to sign, you have to tie into the septic system, or the sewer system. So we made a deal with the people on the west side that you don't have to tie into the sewers until your septic fails to the point where you can't fix it on your own property, then you have to put it on, then you have to tie into the sewers. There was nothing in it that had, that indicated that we were forcing people to do it. They could do it when they couldn't fix their own. We also had the county that was supposed to be doing the inspections on a regular basis. They did for a while, and they didn't. So it's not that we haven't tried to have the inspections done on a regular basis. We paid the county to do it, but they weren't doing a very good job. As a consequence, they didn't get inspected for a long period of time. When those people moved out and other people moved in, and they didn't realize they had septic systems, when it started to fail, they came in and said, you know, there's something going wrong with your sewers, because I can't flush my toilet. They found out they were really on a septic tank, and they hadn't been doing the maintenance on it over the years. So it failed. And in order to tie into the sewer system, they had to trench all the way from their house out to the road where the sewers were. And that's where the cost is at. Because these houses have huge front yards, the houses are set way back, and the cost of trenching is a backbreaker. And it wasn't because we weren't doing what we were supposed to be doing. There were unintended consequences. And it wasn't, and then all of a sudden, everybody started talking about global warming and everything else, which really was a problem, but nobody was talking about that when the sewers were put in. So now more emphasis is put on global warming and not screwing up our water systems. It just so happened that the original people had either sold their houses and moved out, or whatever. And the new people that were in just happened to be a majority African-Americans. So it wasn't like the city is picking on people because they're African-Americans. It's another unintended consequences. And that's what's happened. So this is where we're at now. And I don't know what happened in Pennsylvania that it only cost them ten thousand dollars to do that. Maybe their setback wasn't near as far back as it is on the west side of the city. But it's the trenching out to the road that's the real problem. We've reduced the cost of the tap by a couple of thousand dollars to help. There's more thought that can be put into this whole thing. And when you send the letters out to the council, we can take a look at the letters, and maybe we can soften up the language on the letters. But the fact remains, when your septic tank fails, you gotta do something. You can't live in a house without a sewer system. And you can't move your house closer to the road to cut down on the cost. We have to sit down and figure out, how do we do it the best that we can? But it's still gonna be expensive. And there may be some other ideas that I've even thought about, talking to our representative in Washington, to find out if there's grants that we can get, or some money they can sweep up off the floor, 'cause they're giving away seventeen billion dollars from the military fund to build a wall that we don't need. We ought to be able to find a few hundred thousand dollars to help offset the cost of tying into the sewers in Southfield. But maybe we can't. But we can't give up trying to find out an answer so that it solves the problem, so that we don't pollute the water, people can flush their toilets, and they can pay the bills. So that's, I hope that kind of brings you up to date from where it started out and where it's at. And so that's my story on the septic system. And I'm not sure that point-of-sale is the right answer, unless, quick write-out ordinance for a point-of-sale, because we need to think it all the way through, because there may be some unintended consequences with that. Fix one problem, cause another problem. So that's one thing I wanted to talk about. And I know you're, the other thing is, yeah. The other thing is, we've had a number of people come to the microphone and complain about schools. Well, there are several people on council that have said, this is the wrong government to be talking about the schools. But I don't think there's any problem with our schools. I've had two daughters that graduated from Southfield schools. They had an excellent education. They both went through University of Michigan. One of them is an attorney, and she's a chief operating officer of the University of Michigan Law School. The other one is a schoolteacher in Ann Arbor School District. I've also had two grandsons that went through the Southfield school system, all the way from kindergarten through twelfth grade. The oldest one is a professional musician now. Both of them went through University of Michigan. The oldest of the two went on to Northwestern and got two master's degrees in three years. And when he said he wanted to do that, the people at Northwestern says, told him, you can try if you want. Several other people have tried it, but they've not been successful. It took him four years or five years to do that. He did it in three years. Northwestern changed their rules. They no longer allow people to do two masters in three years. His younger brother, who now works in the computer industry in Ann Arbor, got thirty-four, and you can help me, Mayor, but he got a thirty-four on his ACT, and I think thirty-six is perfect. So all four of the people in my family that went through the Southfield school system got excellent educations. But you can't drop your kid off in the front of the school and pick them up after school and expect that they're gonna get a good education. There's a whole lot of things that need to go on in the home, which we did. And I'm not trying to pat myself on the back, but there's a lot of things that you need to do. You need to take them to museums, you need to read to them, you need to expose them to other things that supplement what they're getting in schools. But being a parent is a tough job. And like I said, you just can't drop them off in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon, and then complain 'cause they didn't get a good education, because you haven't helped them with their homework, you haven't done things around the house to make it better. So again, it's one of those things that you have to work at it to give kids a good education. So those are the two things I've been wanting to say for a long time, and I said them.
Well, sir, we'll defer to you for as many more meetings as you'll be here.
And then you'll clap your hands.
But I appreciate that. And I totally agree. I have a son that's a senior, Southfield A and T right now, and he's been in Southfield School since third grade. And I've been totally satisfied with our school system. Done a very fine job. Mr. Mattlebaum?
Thank you. Through the chair to the city administrator. If we will be discussing the Evercenter property proposal at an upcoming meeting, I would like to know, it was discussed a few meetings back about having the purchasing manager discuss that process, and after there was some criticism. I believe you were working with her to put together either a letter to the council or some type of presentation. And I'd like that to at least take place either before or around the same time as?
October seventh. A study session appropriate for it.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Since it's getting late, I'll just remind everyone that on October thirteenth, we'll have the annual Mid-Century Modern Southfield Tour. And tickets are twenty-five dollars. It's a fundraiser for the Southfield Historical Society. And it's a two-and-a-half-hour tour that starts at Sherazetik. That's a Sunday afternoon, and ends up back at Sherazetik, entering some of our historic neighborhoods, as well as a number of our historic mid-century buildings. I would, tickets are available through my office. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Administrator?
Just one quick comment. We, tonight's agenda was a good-sized agenda. We were, I had originally had the Water Department preparing an update on the lead copper reports. And we, earlier this summer, we had given council a general orientation. Want to let you know that we have, we are in compliance. We have met this, the first date, the September thirtieth, submittal date. All of our samples have been gathered. We are in compliance with that statute. I will have the Public Works Department come in and provide counsel with an update, and then walk through the next steps of the new lead copper rules. But we are in compliance with the requirements, with the next deadline being September thirtieth.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Madam Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this point, the city attorney's office will comment on the introduction of the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, which we discussed earlier today in our study session. And so we are requesting that this ordinance, seventeen-twelve, be introduced with the recommended changes that was discussed this evening, brought up by Councilwoman Morris regarding transfer licensing, reporting to the police, and credit debit cards, as well as certified checks for the licensing portion of the ordinance. as certified checks for the licensing portion of the ordinance.
Counsel?
Mr. Chair?
Entertaining motion?
I'd like to move the introduction of ordinance number seventeen twelve.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Brightwell, that we introduce ordinance number one seven one two, medical marijuana licensing. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I oppose.
We have one. Mr. Focasi, I suppose. Anything else, Madam Attorney?
Nothing at this point, thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the clerks, treasurer, planner, assessor, gen engineer portion. We got one travel request to approve.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Brightwell?
I'd like to move that we approve the travel expense report for City Clerk Sharica L. Hawkins.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Brightwell, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the travel expense report for Sharica Hawkins, attendance to Congressional Black Caucus Conference. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And we also have proposed amendment to the planning department review fee schedule?
Through the chair. This was discussed at your study session earlier tonight. I did provide an updated review fee schedule. It's dated revised date nine twenty-three nineteen. And also, in an updated letter, recommended resolution for your consideration. I would ask that if you should approve this tonight, that becomes effective immediately.
Counsel, anything?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to move the proposed amendments to the planning department review fee schedule. Support.
Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Ms. Morris, that we approve the proposed amendments to the planning department review fee schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Which one was that?
The fee schedule. The fee schedule.
Did you need, you said no? Okay, we have one no vote. Do we have, we need to do anything else with that, or is it?
That's it.
Okay. Then we have three ordinances to enact?
Mr. Chair?
Sorry. We need to officially schedule our meeting for the city planners' review. We discussed the date, but we never voted on it.
We can do it after closed session.
Okay.
Mr. Chair? I move that we enact ordinance number seventeen oh nine for the zoning text amendment for PZTA nineteen dash zero 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 two.
Support.
Been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we enact ordinance number seventeen oh nine, the zoning text amendment for PZTA nineteen zero zero two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item B?
Mr. Chair? I move that we enact ordinance number seventeen ten, the licensing regarding the PZTA nineteen dash zero 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 one.
Support.
Been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we enact ordinance number one seven one zero, licensing regarding PZTA nineteen dash zero zero one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that the, both of them are?
Correct.
Yeah. I'm against the, A, ordinance A, and B. But the records indicate that.
All right, so we have, have one no vote for each one of those, from Mr. Focasi. Item C?
Mr. Chair? I move that we enact amendment to ordinance number sixteen twelve, the amendment to regulation of the ignition discharge and use of consumer fireworks.
Support.
It's been moved by Ms. Taylor, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we enact amendment, the amendment to ordinance number one six one two, the regulation of ignition discharge and use of consumer fireworks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I move that we go into a closed session.
Support.
Been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we go into closed session. Madam Clerk, take a roll call for us.
Councilman Brightwell?
He stepped out.
Councilman Focasi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Morris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mandelbaum?
Yes.
And Councilman Frazier?
Yes.
Through the chair, before we go into closed session, the meeting for Mr. Crowe actually should not be, it should be set in open session, not closed session, regarding the evaluation. He wishes a closed-session evaluation, but the meeting date should be set in open.
In what? I didn't hear what you said. We're going to do it after the closed session. We'll reconvene to open and then set it.
Okay.
Ken?
John Riley.
All right, John, come on.